Good evening. Tonight is Monday, March 17th, 2025, and we are present for the regular meeting of the Mount Lebanon Board of School Directors in Room D 205 of the Mount Lebanon High School with public participation also available by Zoom. We will open tonight with some special guests to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Nikki Gill is here with some students from Hoover, and she will introduce them, and then they'll lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nikki Gill, and I am the proud principal at Hoover Elementary. I'm joined this evening by four of our fifth grade leaders, and I'm going to pass the mic to them to introduce themselves and get us started.
Please rise and turn toward the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening. My name is Gia, and I'm a fifth grader at Hoover Elementary School. I'd like to thank the Board of Directors and Dr. Fries for inviting us to speak with you this evening. My fifth grade classmates and I are excited to share about a special event that we have coming up later this week.
Good evening. My name is Danush. The Hoover Carnival is a unique event that has been a longstanding tradition for our school community. Each year, the fifth graders work in small groups to create carnival-style games. This year, our theme is Wonders of the World. And thanks to our wonderful parent volunteers, we have been spending one day per week designing and building our games during our lunch hour.
Good evening. My name is Lucinda. With our games complete, the fifth graders then invite the entire school community to come to our carnival in the Hoover Gym. We host our stations while the younger students enjoy playing each of the games and earning fun prizes. It is truly a hocksome evening for our students and their family.
Good evening. My name is Marcus. We'd like to invite you to come and check out this year's Hoover Carnival on Wednesday, March 19th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the Hoover Gym. If you think Kennywood is good, you haven't seen anything yet. We hope you can make it. Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, guys. That does sound like a hocksome time. Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Mrs. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fleischer?
Here.
Mrs. Gelman?
Here.
Mrs. Genzel?
Here.
Ms. Guth?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Johnson? Mr. Wyland?
Here.
Eight members present. Thank you. I move that it be resolved that the Board approves the minutes of the Policy Committee meeting held on February 10th, 2025, the discussion meeting held on February 10th, 2025, and the regular meeting held on February 17th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right. We're now at the point of our agenda for Board reports, and first, we're being joined by Connor and Kayden from Jefferson Middle School to present a report on behalf of Student
Good evening. My name is Connor Riley, and I am here as an Executive Board member of the JMS Student Council to give you an update on our activities. On Friday, January 31st, we sponsored our Snowglobe Dance. The dance was for all three grade levels and brought an amazing turnout. In addition to having a dance floor, a DJ with lights, we borrowed two ping-pong tables from Mellon and set them up on the elementary side of the cafeteria for a ping-pong tournament. Our spirit committee went all out in planning and decorating, with many council members donating nine baskets for a raffle. Refreshments were provided with the ticket cost, and 130 students purchased tickets for $8 ahead of time. An additional 30 students paid $10 each at the door. Thanks to the detailed and creative thinking of our spirit committee and the help of all our Student Council members, this was the first profitable dance JMS has ever had. The total profit of the evening was $952. This money has gone back into the Student Activities account to be used for current and future projects. Today, 34 of our members attended the Lucky to Lead PASC conference hosted here by our own high school Student Council. We spent the past few weeks preparing, and 15 of us volunteered to help middle school attendees network by playing Minute to Win It games. And two of our Executive Board members rehearsed with council groups to practice presenting their workshop entitled "Leading Despite My Difficulties." We are excited to attend this conference, especially here in Lebo, knowing we follow in the footsteps of leaders who took the opportunity to host this thing. The day was filled with leadership exercises, including an inspirational motivational speaker and a variety of student-led workshops. Each of the members who attended from our council left with a better understanding of the PASC and the opportunities it provides, and a new motivation for our own leadership journeys. And even though we students could have done a variety of other activities today, this was an extremely worthwhile way to spend a day off. We would like to thank all the staff and students at the high school who took part in planning this conference. We hope our leadership class will have the same initiative to put together such a class event in the future. That wraps up our events so far for the second semester. I would like to turn the podium over to a fellow Executive Board member and my Service Committee co-chair, Kayden Mohammed.
Thank you, and good evening. I would like to take the opportunity to share with you that our council has been planning for the near future. First, to celebrate the start of spring, our council will be hosting a pretzel and lemonade sale this Friday. Students will be currently pre-ordering Philly Pretzel Factory pretzels at the price of $3, or two for $5. On Friday, after school, they will be able to pick up their pretzels and purchase lemonade for $2 outside the front entrance. We hope to, we hope, sorry, we hope to give everyone's spirit, spring spirit, a boost while raising money at the same time. Half of all our proceeds will be donated to the Red Door Charity Organization in downtown Pittsburgh that provides foods, meals, and necessities for the less fortunate in our community. Next, in April, the Service Committee, under the leadership of Connor and I, will be hosting a clothing drive. We hope to encourage all our JMS families to gather all the gently-used clothings that they, that they do in their spring cleanouts. We will collect donations March 24th to April 4th. We are, we are in the process of finalizing a goal to the school and a reward that will coincide. All the donations will be delivered to the Salvation Army. We choose the Salvation Army because the proceeds they collect will be donated, will be used to provide much-needed social services. That covers the plans for early spring. We currently, we are currently planning events for teacher appreciation and our council's end-of-the-year celebration. Thank you for your kind attention. Good evening and good night.
And how special to hear about the impact of the work of our high school council from their middle school peers. Presenting on behalf of the High School Student Council, we have students Kate and Sophie.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sophie Chimbrizay, and I'm one of the senior class co-presidents. Kate, my fellow co-president and I are here to share some exciting updates about some past and upcoming events that have happened at the high school. So, we started off February with the annual snowball dance that was held in Center Court. The theme for this year's dance was Winter in New York City. The skywalk was decorated as though you were taking a walk through a snowy Central Park, and Center Court was decorated with the all-things-Broadway. We had about 423 students attend and sold 450 tickets total. But unfortunately, this dance has not been as well-attended in the past, so we sent out a Google forum to the school asking for more feedback. The feedback we got helped us select a better date for next year, brainstorm ways to encourage friend groups to attend and make it unique from homecoming. Today, we held the Pennsylvania Association of Student Councils, otherwise known as PASC Region B Conference, which we were lucky to be hosting this year. We chose a Lucky to Lead theme as it's St. Patrick's Day, and we were all grateful to have hosted such a fun and beneficial event. Students from both our Student Council and other schools have taken time to create and present workshops, which were all guided towards practice of leadership, building connections, and sharing experiences with other student councils. In addition to workshops, we hosted the keynote speaker Colonel Scott Coltic, who is a retired Marine Corps Colonel from Bethel Park. He set the tone for the day by speaking to us about servant leadership. We also welcomed a panel of students from Carnegie Mellon University's Student Government who answered a series of questions for us. Our Lebo Legacy Games leaders, Kat Walters and Dottie Pikelick, presented on what botchy means to our school and how to bring a tournament like ours to the student bodies. And finally, we had a Four Diamonds representative, Anne Louise de Board, present her work in Minithon. Overall, it was an exciting day with so many opportunities to make connections and to grow as leaders. To plan it, a team of 40 student leaders gathered in committees led by the Senior Executive Council and supervised by a class sponsor every Wednesday morning for several weeks. The seniors then met with Mrs. Tonkovich to give updates and work out any issues, prioritize the work that needed to be done, and come up with the plans to move forward. It was challenging, but very, very rewarding. Now, it may sound like a great time to take a break, but we've got a lot more work to do this month. We have Clash of Classes next week on March 28th, which also marks the end of our, of the third nine weeks. Clash of Classes is an exciting event where all four grade levels are able to compete against each other in fun games such as Hungry Hippos, Knockout, Snake, Relay Races, and Dodgeball. The week leading up to Clash of Classes is also Spirit Week. The themes this time around are PJ Day on Monday, Adam Sandler vs. Jorts on Tuesday, Anything But a Cup Day on Wednesday, Twin Day on Thursday, and Clash of Classes Shirt/Class Colors on Friday. The homeroom with the most Spirit Week participation will win donuts. March also marks the beginning of a season meant to recognize the hard work and accomplishments of students in a variety of ways. To start, we have the Cum Laude Induction Ceremony coming up this Thursday, March 20th, at 7:00 p.m. Seventy seniors will be honored for their incredible academic achievement during their time at Mount Lebanon High School. Then, on April 3rd, at 7:00 p.m., we have the National Honor Society Induction Ceremony, and during the week of April 14th through 18th, we will have spring break. We are all super-excited to take some time off to relax and recharge before jumping into the final stretch of the school year. And speaking of awards, we have also had several successful sports seasons this winter. Rifle and Boys Basketball made it to Whippules and States, and Girls Basketball also made it to Whippules. Devon McCauley of Mount Lebanon captured a wrestling title at the Southern Sectional and advanced to Whippule Class 3A Championships, and several wrestlers qualified for States. After an impressive competition at Whippule Finals, several wrestlers qualified for the PIAAA West Regional. Senior Malcolm Thompson also came home with a fourth-place medal from the PIAA in diving. Finally, senior Sylvia Roy concluded her Whippule Swimming career in record-breaking fashion. She not only secured her fourth consecutive individual titles in both the 50-yard and 100-yard freestyle events, becoming just the third female swimmer in Class 3A to achieve this feat, but she also set three new district records, shattering old records in the process. She then proceeded to the state finals to bring home gold and break another record in her own, her own, in the 100 Backstroke. But that's not all. Make sure you keep track of the arts calendar. Not only did the Theater Department just finish a great show, Puffs, which was a huge hit with audiences, but we are also looking forward to many concerts and the musical ahead. That is all for our March report. Thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.
Okay. I'll let everybody leave before the Board Presidents' Report. Okay, a few things to report this evening in the area of budget and finance. Tonight, Dr. Fries and Mrs. Connolly will present the 2025-2026 Base Budget. The Base Budget highlights proposed preliminary revenues and expenditures, along with key assumptions and areas that are impacting the budget, as well as next steps in the process to balance the budget before adopting a proposed final budget in April and the final budget in May. Part of this planning process is tonight's Board consideration of a motion authorizing the reduction of professional staff for economic reasons for the 2025-2026 school year. While this is an important and necessary step to take this evening in order to meet Pennsylvania Department of Education timelines, the shared goal of the Board and administration is a balanced budget that minimizes impacts on student experience, does not rely on the use of fund balance, and makes difficult decisions to reassign staff, utilize attrition to reduce positions, implement program modifications, and evaluate the lifespan of equipment rather than utilizing furloughs to achieve a balanced budget. Next month, we will hold a Budget Forum on Monday, April 7th, and the Board and Administration encourages community members to attend and participate so that their feedback can be considered prior to adopting the proposed final budget on April 21st. As we do every month, a few highlights from the district's inclusivity calendar. March is Irish-American Heritage Month. This celebrates the heritage and culture as well as honoring contributions of Irish-Americans. In addition, we like to wish folks a happy St. Patrick's Day. March is also National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. This was established to increase awareness and understanding of the issues affecting people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. It's also National Multiple Sclerosis Education and Awareness Month, which was established to raise public awareness of the autoimmune disease that affects the brain and spinal cord and to assist those with multiple sclerosis in making informed decisions about their health care. And March is also Women's History Month. Started in 1987, Women's History Month recognizes all women for their valuable contributions to history and society. On March 21st, we celebrate World Down Syndrome Day, which is a global awareness day officially observed by the United Nations since 2012. This date was significant, was selected to significant, I'll start again. The date was selected to signify the uniqueness of the replication trisomy of the 21st chromosome, which causes Down Syndrome. March 25th is the International Day of Remembrance of the Victims of Slavery and the Transatlantic Slave Trade, which is a United Nations international observation that offers the opportunity to honor and remember those who suffered and died at the hands of the brutal slavery system. First observed in 2008, the International Day also aims to raise awareness about the dangers of racism and prejudice today. And on March 31st is International Transgender Day of Visibility, celebrated to bring awareness to transgender people and their identities and to recognize those who help fight for their rights of transgender people. A few district highlights. Our High School Student Council did a wonderful job highlighting many of the academic, athletic, and artistic achievements and events that are coming up, so I will highlight a few others. Six Mount Lebanon middle school students are heading to the state competition after earning first-place honors at the recent Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science, or PJAS, regional event. The first-place winners will move on to the state competition this May at Penn State University. Congratulations to the following students for earning first-place recognition. Eighth graders Sanvi Banca, Colin Bozik, Liam Fury, Eli Lysus, and Elena Rath, and seventh grader Alex Petrie. Congratulations also goes to our Mount Lebanon High School Science Club members for their hard work, diligent research, and stellar science presentations at the PJAS regional competition. First-place winners include Annalise Meyer, Clay Rath, Ayesha Ansari, Julia Gill, Peter Goslin, Katie Ding, Alex Fu, Anna Momoroski, Jonathan Ramachandran, Lyra Stiglitz, Sam Wetzel, August Sentner, Lucian Mickish, and Lila Polat. Jefferson Middle School presents Frozen Junior, March 20th through the 22nd. Each show is at 7:00 p.m. at the JMS Auditorium. For more information and tickets, visit the JMS website. And for the first time this year, Mellon Middle School presents the musical The Wizard of Oz Youth Edition, April 3rd, 4th, and 5th at 7:00 p.m. in the Mellon Middle School Auditorium. For more information and tickets, please visit the Mellon website. On Tuesday, April 1st, please join the District for Lebo University, which begins at 6:30 p.m. here at the high school. This engaging event is designed to provide parents and guardians with valuable information and resources to support their families and contribute to students' academic and social and emotional well-being. Guests will have the opportunity to select three 40-minute sessions. For more information and descriptions of each of the sessions, please visit our website, mtlst.org. Lebo University is in the Family section. And finally, the Great Alumni Award, which was established by the Mount Lebanon High School Student Council in 2004, recognizes outstanding alumni who have made a significant impact in their communities and professions. Honorrees are selected based on their exceptional contributions in at least one of the following areas: improving the lives of others, community service, volunteer work, or professional achievement. Nominations for the 2025 Great Alumni Award are being accepted through April 15th, 2025. Winners will be recognized at a special luncheon and honored during the homecoming football game this fall. For more information, please visit our website. That concludes my report. Next up, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you so much. Mr. Stengel is going to put the presentation up for me. All right. So, the first thing that I want to highlight is that the Mount Lebanon Band, Blue Devil Band, was at the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Chicago, and I had the opportunity to go and watch them play, very, very proud of them. I can't imagine being on such a large stage, and there were a lot of people, as you can imagine, and they did a fantastic job and represented our school district very well. In addition to that, I just wanted to remind everyone that we have our Business Roundtable that's coming up next week. It will be held on, no, I'm sorry, that date's wrong. I don't know why it says March 12th, but it's being held, because March 12th already happened. It's going to be held on March the 26th from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is the opportunity for our business members in the community to come and hear about the things that are taking place here in the school district. This is our second one of the year. Our first one was very well-attended, and we hope to have just as many people, if not more, at this next one next week. In addition to that, as Mrs. Fleischer mentioned, we do have Lebo Parent University that's coming up. There are a variety of opportunities for families and the community to get involved and sign up for one of these sessions or three of these sessions. The registration date goes through, not this Friday, but the following Friday, which I believe is the...
28.
The 28th. This month went by really, really fast. We have over 100 people signed up in just a week, so if you know someone that would be interested in any of these topics, please encourage them to participate. We're really excited about it. We have quite a few people, both internally and externally, that are coming in to present on these topics, and we'd love to fill up the rooms and make sure that people get the information that they've been requesting. And then finally, for our presentation and the Superintendent Update today, we have an update on Lebo United. And as many of you know, Lebo United has a mission and a vision that we created last year with our working group. The Mount Lebanon School District is committed to providing a safe, inclusive, and welcoming school environment that recognizes and celebrates the diverse identities within our community so everyone feels a sense of belonging. We're dedicated to providing equitable resources, staff professional learning, and support to ensure students and staff from all backgrounds, identities, or abilities reach their full potential and pursue their unique talents. And our vision is we see a future where every student, family, faculty, and staff member feels at home at Mount Lebanon. Mount Lebanon School District seeks to build a lasting legacy of community where diversity naturally thrives and flourishes in our schools through inclusivity, belonging, and accessibility. Lebo United is a voluntary group that meets after school at least once a month. We have 21 staff members from across the district and 14 students in grades 5 through 12 who participate in Lebo United. Each of our committees is going to give an update today. We're going to be starting with Committee Number One, which is Dr. Davis, followed by Committee Number Two. Mrs. Smith will provide that one, and then Committee Number Three, Dr. Schuman. And I'll click for you.
That'd be perfect. Thank you. Good evening all. Thank you, Dr. Fries. So, our Subcommittee's focus is on developing a comprehensive professional development plan for all staff support equity and inclusion, and it actually dates back to a survey that occurred at the end of the 2023-2024 school year, which then drove our 2024-2025 focus. And as you can see in the descriptor there, it talks about utilizing baseline data, and again, that came from the survey in 2324. Draft the plan specific to professional development activities. Stakeholder outcomes will directly impact the specific professional development activities in alignment with identified needs of the stakeholder groups. So, we've really been focusing, as you'll see here in a second, you know, we've identified what stakeholder needs are and been trying to offer that specific programming as it's needed. So, our second, then, focus becomes implementing that professional development training and providing tools and resources specific to stakeholder groups. As you may recall, Dr. Fries did a presentation in the fall that itemized the number of trainings that were provided in the fall, and I'll give you the update from the spring here in a second. And then our third focus is to gather feedback to determine the success of the training and supporting our goals. And that's what our Subcommittee is currently working on, is developing that feedback tool that we will implement before the end of the school year. And then in the other, other side of the frame there, you see that talks about alignment to our goals, is developing a professional development plan for all employees with the assistance of the Professional Development Committee. As the Board is aware, we launched a K through 12 Professional Development Committee, so we've been working closely with them in the redesign of professional development and how some of our topics fit into that, into that redesign. And then that second bullet there talks about implementation improvements for the continued progress of the Lebo United Committee and provide quarterly updates through the, you know, through the, to the committee through these Board Updates. Thank you. So, here's the slide that mirrors similar to what you saw in the fall. It itemizes the professional development activities that occurred in this Lebo Summit, and running through some of the topics in there, strategies to support multilingual learners, fostering inclusive excellence in the, in the school district, accommodations and supports for working with students, supporting students' executive functioning, executive functions, eligibility and dismissal criteria for speech and language support, applied behavior analysis, epilepsy, multilingual learners, part two, and then applied behavior analysis, part two. And as you go to the next slide, really what we were trying to do here is meet very specific requests that came forward, so you'll see the number of participants per session. So, again, dating back to our survey last, last school year, 2324, we were looking at the topics that were being requested and the specificity of the programming, and you can see on the slide there, the number of attendees that we had per session. So, we've got, we've got, as we move forward, two more things to work through. One is to come up with our survey for this particular year about our two Lebo Summit presentations, but then the continuation of professional development into the 2526 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Next up, we have Mrs. Smith. Oh, let's see, got a little reset.
Hello. I'm representing Subcommittee Number Two, and our goal for the year is a safe and inclusive climate to ensure all stakeholders feel safe, supported, and included as valued members of the school community. So, for this school year, our focus has been the onboarding process for new families, celebrating the people who make Mount Lebanon special. Prepare to respond to harassment. How do we communicate the updated policies to students, staff, and families? On the following slides, I'll show the activity to date aligning to our focus. And the alignments of the goals for the strategic plan are to evaluate and make recommendations and implement improvements to services that positively impact the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students as measured by the school climate survey, and to evaluate and make improvements to the bully harassment policy and administrative regulations. On the next slide, so we analyze the enrollment process. We call this the Family Journey. We call this the family journey as they enroll and join Mount Lebanon School District. So we really thought through, how does that start from a family saying, I need to enroll my student? We just moved to the community, and their process for enrollment and how we can improve that. We have expanded our translation services for new families that are registering for the district if they do need those services. And then we're looking to launch a welcome page on the website and a welcome letter for the 2526 school year. The reason we would have something on our website is because that is able to be translated through Google Translate, whereas sometimes emails aren't as easily translated or, you know, through the service provider we tend to use for designed emails. So we really want to send people back to the website where they can find that new information. So at any point when they join the district, they'll be able to easily access the calendar, lunch information, safe walking routes, anything that a family would need if they're new to the district. Because, you know, quite frankly, when you enroll, you're overwhelmed with a lot of information. So this will be a reminder in case they forget anything, just a guide for where to find those key information. So the next goal is celebrating the people who make Mount Lebanon special. So throughout the year, we have been updating the, using the inclusion calendar to update social media for key dates throughout the year. So you'll see two posts. We kept things a little bit styled similarly, so when people see it in their feed, they can recognize that that is one of the days that we are celebrating. So you'll see two that were here that were used throughout the year. And then we're recognizing events across the district that celebrate the diverse identities within our community so everyone feels a sense of belonging. You'll see here an event that Washington Elementary had with their International Heritage Night. All right. On the next slide, prepare and respond to harassment. How we communicate these policies to staff, students, and families? So earlier this year, students reviewed our unlawful harassment and discrimination information earlier this year. Or actually, that is being prepared for this fall with the updated policy. So there is a presentation going with that. And then we did some mid-year reminders, which gave us the opportunity to direct people to the bullying report. So that button is included on all of our schools' websites that they can update if they are experiencing bullying or know somebody that may. And that's subcommittee number two.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Dr. Schuman?
I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick question about the email service that you...
Yes.
Mentioned? Because I do know we've really streamlined our weekly email that goes out, and I think almost 80% of all of the families that receive that do open that. It's a meat... Is there a way to look into a service that is more easily translatable?
So the Google Docs are. So that was another reason of switching to the Google Docs within the school newsletters. So once they click in there, it's translatable. It's been something, it's been a struggle for email providers like Constant Contact and other ones, services that we've actually looked into. And they say they're working on it, but they've yet to launch it. So it's something we keep monitoring, too. But most families, we know, and it's something that we direct them to, there's ways that they can view that differently, where they can translate it, or if they cut and paste to be able to translate it. But it's definitely something that's top of mind as we explore this process, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. And then committee number three, Dr. Schuman.
Oh, thank you. So for subcommittee number three, our overarching goal was to utilize inclusive strategies in curriculum for all students. We had three focus areas, which were to establish practices for assessment and placement that ensure all students have equal access to opportunities through ongoing professional learning, incorporate a wide variety of culturally responsive and inclusive instructional strategies intended to meet the needs of differing learning styles, second language acquisition and backgrounds, and implement curricula that are representative of our diverse population inside and outside of the district. These goals or focus areas directly align to our Student Services Program Review, which is taking place this year, our Special Education Program Review, and then as we begin to update our curriculum in the cycle, making sure that we're utilizing a rubric to review piloted So our group decided that in order to think about next steps and how we want to move forward is that we really need to look at the data. And so our group took a deep dive into the Student Academic Outcomes Report. We pulled enrollment data, any subgroup data such as IEPs, GIPs, 504, economically disadvantaged data. We looked at discipline reports, and then also the PAST, which is like our social, emotional learning assessment. So our group really just took a look at all those different areas and how our students performed, how our students were referred to programs, and if they participated in tests such as AP exams, SAT, PSAT, ACT. So we then have some different areas that we are going to continue to review and make recommendations on. So again, we took a look at which students are accessing secondary-level courses such as AP honors, interventions that are available at the secondary level in their enrollment to make sure that students are getting the supports they need, create a plan for addressing the disparities in elementary math performance, creating a plan for addressing disparities in gifted and special education, and introducing a rubric for assessing any new curricular resource.
Thank you. And that concludes my update for the month.
Next, we have board member reports. The first is Policy Committee, Ms. Goode.
Sure. Excuse me. This month, we reviewed numerous policies as we transitioned from NSBA services to PSBA services. And we reviewed 301, which is creating a position, 302, which is employment of a superintendent, assistant superintendent, 304, which is employment of district staff, 304.1, which is anti-nepotism, 305, which is employment of substitutes, 306, which is employment of summer school staff, 307, which is student teachers, and that will effectively retire LEA student teaching, and 815.1, which is artificial intelligence. And we will also be retiring GDFAB, which is reporting arrests and convictions. And massive thank you to Dr. Fries and Dr. Joel Thompson and Dr. Schuman, Dr. Shulu, and Dr. Davis about the artificial intelligence policy. It's really exciting work that they're doing, and we are happy to have it on the agenda tonight to vote for. That is all.
PSBA and Board Development, Mrs. Gelman.
Sure. So PSBA released the 2025 State of Education Report, which was a, or which is a comprehensive overview of the current state of public education in PA. Student mental health needs continue to be one of the biggest challenges faced by school districts, along with budget pressures and staffing shortages. Full report is available on the PSBA website. Also, May 13th is Advocacy Day in Harrisburg, and the board did meet for a communications board development session last week.
MLFE, Mrs. Gensel.
Hi there. Not too much to report. The grant applications have gone out to teachers, so we'll be reviewing those shortly. And then the only other thing we're very excited about, the partnership with the art classes, the AP Art Show, which will be on April 25th, and I really encourage everybody to come. There's tons of beautiful artwork for sale. I saw some of the examples when Mrs. Rodriguez brought them to the meeting, and our art students are just very impressive. We wanted to buy some right then on the spot to take home. But anyway, I hope everyone comes out to the art show, and that's it.
And Mrs. Gensel, I once again neglected to add PTA council updates to this list, but are there any updates to share?
I can't think of any, any updates to share tonight, but going forward...
We'll remember.
What'd you say?
I'll remember to add it.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Thank you.
I'll ask him to remember. Municipal Liaison, Mrs. Crable.
Sure. Short report tonight. We have hired a new fire chief, and the new renovation for Williamsburg Park is on the way. So they have started renovation there, and nothing from last month. We're parks and rec, and we meet this Wednesday.
And I just also want to thank Mrs. Crable while I'm here for representing the board at the Winter Athletics Recognition Night.
Thanks.
Parkway West, Ms. Johnson is not here. Mrs. Crable?
Nothing to report.
Pathfinder School, Mrs. Burdick.
Yes, we met last month, and the space rental agreement that I discussed with you in detail last month passed the jointure board vote. So that is anticipated to go into effect at the end of December of '25, so still several months away. But they anticipate the funding of Act 77 to discontinue and to be retired at the end of this year. So as of the start of the next calendar year, that new rental agreement will go into effect. The students have enjoyed Valentine's Day celebrations. They had a dance that was well-attended, and that is a favorite among their students. And they are looking forward to rocking their crazy socks on the 21st, which is the World Down Syndrome celebration.
Shazda, I have nothing to report. Civic Engagement, Mr. Hoffman.
Yeah, thank you. The Civic Engagement Board met at the municipal building first Wednesday of the month, and they have released their annual report that documents the different projects that the committee helped lead over the past year. Many of those I have discussed at previous meetings, including the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, that brought over 100 community members together to support many different efforts throughout the community, the Residence Academy, police engagement, DEI efforts, and a community service award. So this group has been doing a lot of work. The next meeting is coming up. It's always the first Wednesday of the month, so I think that's maybe April 3rd-ish.
Sure. Sounds legit.
So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. And our final report this evening is a presentation on the base budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Fleischer. Tonight, I'm going to present general information about the 2526 base budget, and it's going to be an overview of revenue sources for the 2526 proposed preliminary budget and expenditures for that budget, which we will deep dive at the Budget Forum. There's also a review of fund balance, steps to balance the 2526 budget, and our timeline. So let's first talk about the 2526 projected revenue. There are three basic revenue sources that make up and support our budget: local, state, and federal. Local revenue sources is about 77% of our budget. This is the largest revenue source, which is driven by real estate taxes controlled by the Act 1 index. Other local revenues include other taxes, pass-through funds, and fees associated with school programs and operations. The second-largest revenue source is the state funds that come in from the state. This is revenue aligned with the governor's proposed budget. It's 23% of our total budget. This budget and these funding, these funds have to be approved by the state legislatures. It includes subsidies and grants funded by PDE and other PA departments. And then finally, a very, very small portion of our budget is federally funded. That is .4 of a percent, or 004%. These are federal grants supporting at-risk learners and challenged learners through title funding and Medicaid. So as you can see from the pie chart on the right, this represents, you know, 77% is locally funded, and that is what really drives most of our funding. Local revenue is mostly sourced from our real estate tax. This type of revenue accounts for approximately 65% of our overall revenue. Our current revenue projection for local real estate tax is $80,850,640. The Act 1 index is calculated by the Commonwealth each fiscal year using the base index and district adjustment. The base index is the average of the percentage changes in wages statewide and the percentage changes in school employee compensation nationwide. The 2526 Act 1 base index for all school districts began at 4%. The district adjustment is an adjustment for districts with lower or declining wealth. Mount Lebanon School District 2526 adjustment is .7%. So the projected real estate revenue increase for Mount Lebanon School District in 2526 with a 4% Act 1 index is 1.377 mils, and that equals $3,411,207. The index is significantly lower than last year, which was 6.2%, which at that time it was 1.7105 mils, or about $4.2 million in addition that we could count on. The Act 1 exceptions permits the district to adopt, without voter approval, a final budget containing a rate increase greater than the Act 1 index if we are found to be approved for exceptions. There are two exceptions that we applied for: special education and retirement. The special education exception will likely be approved for special education due to the increase in expenses between the base years of 2022-23 and 2324. If approved, the projected net revenue and mileage increase is $748,701, or .0002724 additional mils. We also applied for retirement exceptions, however, we will likely not be eligible due to the flat level of full-time employees in our district. We haven't increased the FTEs, and the PISA's rate is slightly decreasing in the past two years. So in February, we applied for these exceptions, and we will receive a response by March 26th from the Commonwealth. Continuing with local revenue, the Act 1 plus the Act 1 exceptions, these are pending the Commonwealth's approval for the exception and the Mount Lebanon School Board's approval of the overall tax increase. The highest increase in real estate revenue for 2526, for the 2526 school year, would be $4,159,908. And the breakdown is there for you, so you can see the math. The 4.7% Act 1 index brings in approximately $3.4 million. The Act 1 exceptions for special ed, an additional $750,000, for a total of about $4.1 million. We have to acknowledge that we've had high refunds to homeowners, and part of that is because of the CLR and the impact on real estate values. The CLR is the common level ratio, and it is a ratio used to calculate property assessments in PA. The CLR is set by the Pennsylvania State Tax Equalization Board, or STEB. On September 1st, 2022, Judge Hersberg issued a preliminary injunction reducing the CLR in Allegheny County in 2022 from 81.1% to 63.5%, and it has decreased each year since. Real estate values in Mount Lebanon have decreased due to the tax appeals related to the common level ratio. So this next table gives us the history of the CLR from '22 to '25 and how the property values have decreased over those years. And as you can see, between '22 and '23 and '23 and '24, those were the biggest dips. We're finally leveling out a little bit in 2025. We've seen an increase of $214,000, but that is very insignificant. It's basically flat level for a district with as many homes as we have in Mount Lebanon. This slide gives a history of the mileage rates over, from '22 to '24. This slide gives a history of the mileage rates over, from 2024-25 to 24-2015. I want to reiterate that our local real estate taxes are the district's main source of revenue. State revenue has not kept pace with the increase in expenses that all districts are experiencing in both regular education and special ed. Federal revenue for title funding is expected to decrease slightly. Besides real estate revenue, the local revenue sources also consist of another category. This type of revenue accounts for approximately 12% of our overall revenue. Our current projection for other local sources of revenue is $14.9 million, about that much. This source of revenue includes earned income tax, interest on investments, realty transfer tax when a property is sold, delinquent tax collections for earned income tax and real estate, gate receipts for sporting events, ticket sales for the musical and evening theater, pay-for-play, permit fees for building usage, student parking fees, and tuition for programs like summer enrichment and driver's ed. All of those revenue sources equate to about 12% of our total revenue budget. The next category is state revenue sources. This type of revenue accounts for approximately 23% of our overall revenue. Governor Shapiro presented the state's preliminary budget on February 4th, 2025. The preliminary state basic ed and special ed revenue was slightly higher than '24-25 with a proposed increase of only $223,000, for a total of $12.2 million. Last year, we received $1.1 million less than the preliminary budget proposed. For the 25-26 budget, the projections are built on an assumption of flat funding for basic and special ed subsidy, or $12,016,174. Because there's so much at stake with Governor Shapiro's budget, it's best to be conservative in this area and project with flat funding at this time. Combining the state subsidies with other state revenue, such as social security and PISA's reimbursements, construction subsidy, health services subsidy, gaming fund allocations, transportation subsidy, the Ready to Learn Block Grant, the 25-26 preliminary state revenue projection at this time is $28.8 million for Mount Lebanon. The next source of federal, of revenue is federal revenue. And again, this is a very, very small, small allocation. Nevertheless, we do account for it. This type of revenue accounts for approximately .004% of the overall revenue. Our current projection for federal revenue is $559,891. This projection assumes flat funding for federal dollars supporting Title I, II, III, and IV, and our Medicaid dollars. This funding is subject to approval, and it is under discussion at the federal level. IDEA funding supports special education and is also driven by the federal government, but we have it listed under local revenue because this is pass-through money through our local intermediate unit. And I just want to review the 25-26 proposed preliminary revenue assumptions. The assumptions are: the adjusted Act One Index of 4.7% was applied to our current real estate values. Exceptions are included in the projection. The state basic ed funding and state special ed funding is flat. The Ready to Learn Block Grant is flat. We will see a slight decrease to title funding. Medicaid is flat. And the revenues analyzed and projected by reviewing the last three years were subject to this analysis. The assigned fund balance to be used for prior-year real estate refunds can be used, but we aren't, we are trying to avoid that. Also, as of today, our proposed preliminary revenue shortfall is $1,528,081. So now I would like to discuss the 25-26 proposed expenditures. This is as of today. We have expenditures projected to be at $126,647,338. According to the Chart of Accounts, we divide all the expenditures among objects. So you can see by this chart, the personnel and employee benefits consumes almost 75% of the total expense budget. And I also want to bring to your attention that our bond payments are under Object 900, and they're at $11.9 million, almost $12 million. Everything else in between is budgeted through the department managers, the budget managers and directors, and the assistant superintendents. This is just a visual of the expenses that I just went over. And as you can see, salary and benefits gives you a good visual there that they take up the biggest pieces of our pie, and the dark gray is our bond payments. So this slide discusses about what I just said. 84.9% of the preliminary expenses are related to salary, benefits, and bond payments. Only 15.1% is available for all other commitments, such as curriculum, new and revised curriculum, supplies, and experiences, technology, which includes software, hardware, and security, facilities, which includes buildings, grounds, maintenance, and security, tuition for outplace special education students, Parkway and charter school tuition, transportation for special education, athletics, field experiences, and transportation to Parkway. Athletics, we have 53 high school and middle school sports that are funded through the general fund, and we do have the budget for prior-year real estate tax refunds due to the CLR impact. These are the assumptions for the 25-26 preliminary expenses. Salary expense increase of 3.5% with 24-25 staffing levels, less retirees who separated in the second semester. We are expecting that our healthcare insurance increase will be 10%. The PISA's employer contribution rate was certified at 34.0%. Bond payments are not adjusted for refinancing. Prior-year refunds on residential and commercial properties at $700,000. Purchase of elementary ELA and science curriculum at $665,000. We budgeted a 3% increase to special ed tuition, 3% increase to charter school tuition, and a 10% increase to Parkway due to increased enrollment and Parkway tuition increase projections. We will have a 3% increase to our transportation outside contract. Department and curriculum expense budgets are flat or below prior year. Our assistant superintendents and our department heads work very hard to keep everything flat or below prior year. We have budgeted $119,282 for capital projects, which are essential to maintain for next year's buildings and grounds. So this is a visual of our 24-25 budgeted projection. We are experiencing a projection of $721,000 deficit in 24-25. If we do not close in on that, that will be taken out of our unassigned fund balance. This, again, is the 25-26 proposed preliminary budget and deficit of $1.5 million. And if we cannot narrow that down, that, again, would have to be taken out of unassigned fund balance, which is only, only sitting at about $2.3 million, so we are digging into that, and we want to maintain it. So this is a visual of our fund balance as of June 30th, 2024. The graphic on the left shows the breakdown of our fund balance. And our unassigned is $2.1 million. And if we don't, if we have a deficit, the projected deficit for 24-25, $721,000 will be used, and that will bring it down to $1.4 million. So we are taking pretty big steps to balance the 25-26 budget. The Board of School Directors will be asked to vote to authorize furloughs tonight to meet Pennsylvania Department of Education timelines. This is the same process we used last year. The required vote to authorize furloughs applies to MLEA employees only. However, all work groups are listed in the resolution to demonstrate that all groups may be impacted by furloughs. Our goal of a balanced budget is not relying on the use of fund balance. It is to reassign staff, utilize attrition to reduce positions, implement program modifications, and evaluate the lifespan of equipment rather than utilize furloughs. And this is our timeline. On April 7th, we will conduct the Budget Forum for 25-26. On April 21st, the Board will be asked to adopt a proposed final budget. And on May 21st, they will be asked to approve the final budget for 25-26. Are there any questions?
A few. I'll kick off just to note, for the Board and the community, again, we showed, as part of our general operating budget, the federal portion that comes direct in title funds is fairly minuscule, but there is a chunk of federal funding for special education that is a pass-through through the AIU, as well as a separate standalone budget for food services, which is also funded through the USDA for free and reduced lunch and other food subsidies. I just want to make sure that that's...
Yes, that is correct.
And are those represented in the .004%? Or that's...
They are not. They're represented in the state budget. They're at pass-through funds.
Because they're pass-through.
So they get provided to the AIU that then passes them through to us. And for the funding related to food service, they have a completely separate budget from the general fund.
They're sort of a standalone...
Understand. And that .004, my quick math was it was still about half a million dollars.
Correct.
I mean, you know, as a percentage of the budget, it's small, but it's still real money.
Well, and it's for, the title funds are for, I think, the students who are sort of some of our most vulnerable, and we typically use those to provide reading support.
Yeah?
Yes.
Reading and math.
Is there an estimate for when we will know final healthcare costs, or is that 10% the final number?
No, we will know on April 4th. There's, there will be a consortium meeting, and they will give us the final rates. And that will be before the April 7th vote, or before the Budget Forum, but we'll have all that together for you.
And then, you know, this is my sixth or seventh budget, so I've seen gaps of as much as $4 million in this base budget, so I'm not, like, super nervous about, you know, making up a one and a half million dollar gap, although I do know that with our budgeting last year, as was already noted, we did reduce staff, not through furloughs, but through retirements and attrition and through reassignments. I think we reduced 31 total staff or somewhere thereabouts. So there's not a ton more reduction that's possible, as well as getting our zero-based curriculum and supply and that other 15% budget's really as streamlined and efficient as possible, so even keeping them flat, I mean, there's not a ton of savings. So can you talk a little bit about what staffing and other proposals? I guess, what's your level of confidence in coming to the forum on April 7th with a proposed budget that is balanced, that does meet the goals that we set out?
I will speak to that. Our goal is to not furlough. Our goal is to get the curriculum that we need, which means very difficult decisions as it relates to everything else over the course of the next month. Staffing takes place this week, so with that staffing will come decisions about attrition. And then in addition to that, we'll be looking at some of our items that are still out there that we have, that we need, but may need to pass on in order to balance the budget. And those discussions are ongoing, they're daily. We believe that we can get to the 1.5. It won't be what we want, but it's going to be what we need to do in order to balance.
And then, I'm happy to see that the state funding with a balanced budget is being held level, so hopefully, we won't get a reduction from the state, so that would eliminate a big surprise since our timeline for our budget is before the state's timeline for their final budget. Can you just remind me one more thing, and then I'm going to turn it over? How many retirements have we already received this year from?
We have 12 from MLEA and one in Act 93.
Thank you. And other questions from the Board or just general comments?
Well, thank you, First, for putting together such a detailed base budget for us. It's very exciting to see so much thought and everything that went into it. One question that I have, and I know that we do a lot of work with the AIU, has this been, like, I know this is across all of the districts, so have we started any other conversations or any other creative ways for us to work together with them as well? Just curious if that has started to hit the table yet.
The AIU has really fantastic resources, but some of the programs that they provide have an overhead part, component, so it usually exceeds what we can afford and what we can, exceeds what we can do on our own.
Other questions or comments?
A couple, just observations, and just to highlight a few points. Thank you for the hard work that you guys have been putting into this. The, the CLR, I just want to highlight, you did a very nice job just detailing the numbers and the impact of that. But over the four years that were depicted here between 2022 and present, it looks like a total reduction in the taxable value of property in Mount Lebanon, it's somewhere around $32 million. And that's a year-over-year number. So every year, the taxable value of what accounts for 77, 6, I'm sorry, 65% of our total revenue is reduced by a very meaningful amount. And that, while the number has leveled off recently, you know, it's likely to decrease more over time until there, a fix is implemented. And there's a couple different ways that that fix can be implemented. A county-wide reassessment would fix that problem, right? Legislation from the Pennsylvania Legislature could fix that problem. But for one reason or another, neither the county nor the state legislature has the backbone to pass the, to stand by campaign commitments and to pass the legislation necessary to fix this problem. And this isn't a problem that confronts just us here in Mount Lebanon. This is a problem that confronts all school districts across the state, but more dramatically, school districts within Allegheny County because of Judge Hertzberger's decision, terrible decision, in my opinion. There was a challenge that was, a lawsuit that was filed by Pittsburgh Public Schools and Attorney Ira Weiss that has worked with us in the past on some of our labor relations stuff, and unfortunately, they lost that.
They just were found that they didn't have standing, but they didn't rule on the question.
Okay, thank you. And certainly, for our Solicitor, Board President, Superintendent, if I'm off the mark on any of the factual basis here, certainly you guys know better than I, you know, but part of the sort of, what I read... But part of the sort of, what I read, you know, is that the county is able to, and other municipal entities are able to raise taxes to sort of offset the reduction in the value, the taxable value of property. But they're able to just do it proportionally so that, more or less, even though the tax rate is higher, because the value of the property that's being taxed is lower, the sort of net effects to the taxpayer isn't all that great. And they're able to continue to balance their budget. But school districts are restricted by Act 1, right? We can only raise our taxes by the Act 1 index. So, even though the value of property goes lower, we're not able to raise taxes to keep pace with that on a one-to-one basis. So, as a result, school districts lose this revenue year over year over year. And that's going to continue until these other governmental bodies, with the power and the authority to make the necessary changes, stand up to make those changes. So, to anybody that I'm shouting to in the void, that's listening to this, you know, lobby campaign, talk to somebody, talk to your legislator, talk to your county representatives. County Council has the ability to do this. They just don't have the will at the moment. And I don't know what's going to motivate them or trigger them to do the right thing. But it's a fix that has to happen. So...
I'd like to add just another thing too, to give homeowners, speaking directly to homeowners. This impact of the CLR, the highest impact for us is commercial properties. So, when commercial properties file an assessment appeal, and maybe they're worth 20 million and now they're worth 5 million, that gets passed along to homeowners. When you think about the county and the raising of taxes by 30%, they had to raise them by 30% because the valuation of properties in the county have gone down significantly. What are majority properties are commercial properties. I think the best example, if you read articles about this, is that a skyscraper in downtown Pittsburgh is being valued at under $1 million. And I think we all know that for a skyscraper to be built or to be maintained, it's worth more than $1 million. And sadly, not everybody thinks that that's a problem. I personally think it's a huge problem. I've been told in the past, when I've asked questions about it, that they're doing it to prevent homeowners who have a fixed income from having raised taxes. But those people are being impacted. They're being impacted by local taxes from a school district. They're being impacted by the county. And they're being passed by in favor of giving incentives to commercial properties. And to me, that is probably one of the most unfortunate things and needs to be addressed. And, you know, as Mr. Wyland shared, we have been advocating as a school district to anybody that will listen. We've talked to County Council. We've talked to our senators. I've talked to senators who aren't even our senators in the state to say, like, this is a problem for all school districts. And if we are to value education, which is preparing our future for lives outside of our walls, then we have to invest in it. And I understand that there's other areas that need to be invested in as well. But don't make us the bad guys to be the ones that have to raise taxes every year to survive. And also, don't put us in a position where we always have to be the ones making the hard decisions. Because after a while, it gets kind of old. You know, if you go and you search a recent Senate hearing that I was invited to speak at, I asked the politicians to do their job so that I don't have to do it for them. And that's a hard, you know, disclosure, but it's something that needs to be said because it's not just going to impact Mount Lebanon. It's going to impact all school districts in the county. And it's sad because we're the only ones being impacted by it because our peers in other counties already have a plan or, you know, do it in another way.
Yeah, and just to add to that, just to pile on, if you're looking for things to talk to your county representatives or state representatives about. I mean, I've spoken with folks at the county who basically say that the county is violating the state constitution for tax equity because of this issue. If you have a property and you're paying so much below what it would be at a fair and like reasonably excess value. And if they were to do a reassessment, the district, there's a no windfall provision. So, we're not saying this because we want to get, I think you can get up to 5% more than your current amount of taxation. What happens is the millage rate gets reduced to match the valuation of the properties. It's not like this would be a huge windfall, but it would just be that compounding effect if properties were assessed at their actual value. And then each year, we could weigh that Act 1 index on what made sense locally for our residents. There are, there is, there was a state law that was passed last year called the LOOP, which is a longtime owner occupancy, longtime owner occupant tax exemption program, which now does make it legal for taxing municipalities and counties to help protect longtime homeowners from major tax increases that might come with something like a reassessment. So, I do know that that's being considered at the county level. And it is possible that if they were able to pass that legislation, that then they would get enough county counselors, which, a majority of county counselors, who would be willing to consider a reassessment. Because we can certainly empathize that they are concerned about the impact on longtime owner occupants, primarily seniors on fixed incomes, of doing something like a county-wide reassessment. So, I would say also, we can advocate for them to pass this LOOP legislation, which is being drafted at the county level, so that they can then take the next step while protecting those longtime homeowners of reassessing at a regular and constitutionally mandated interval the properties in the county. So that we don't end up with, you know, really school districts and our taxpayers bearing the brunt of their inability to act.
Those are great points, Ms. Fleischer. You know, I think a lot of folks fear that a reassessment means that there would be some giant windfall, that their property value would skyrocket, therefore their tax bill would also skyrocket. But to your point, that's just, that's not the case, right? So, what's happening now is as property values are artificially being driven down by these two factors, the other municipal entities are jacking the tax rate up to just sort of offset it so that more or less you're taxing folks at the same rate. That if you were to fix that and just tax everybody at a real, accurate, what is it today, value, then the tax rate comes down to sort of equalize that. So, there wouldn't be that kind of windfall. So, to the extent that, you know, folks are, you know, concerned rightfully, that if the taxable value of their home, you know, went to the present-day fair market value, that suddenly their tax bill would explode, that's not necessarily the case. And I think the second piece of legislation that you described, Ms. Fleischer, I think would add an extra layer of protection and comfort for folks that, you know, maybe are on a fixed income or maybe are at a point in their life that they've been in their home for, you know, for decades. And, you know, to make this something that hopefully, a majority of people in power in the county could get behind to pass to fix this problem.
Right. I don't even think we've gotten into the regular agenda yet, but I will ask if there are any other questions on the base budget or comments presentation.
I have a question regarding the special education funding. To be, one of the assumptions is that we are considering it to be flat in terms of what, what our income would be. However, our expenditures for special education do tend to go up year over year. So, for that reason, is my understanding that the Board has authorized the exceptions. And we would find that out later. But they might not, that might not make up for all of it in terms of, it might go up more than $748,000 worth of expenditure. In which case, where would, I think I know the answer. Where would we be finding that, those funds? Because those are IEP mandated. We're not going to stop serving those kids. And we get more and more special needs population and English language learning kids every year. So, let's say we do get the exception and we get even more kids. Where does that money come from?
Well, our projections are based upon what we expect our enrollment to be next year, as well as some additions. So, we do plan for that. So, it's baked into the numbers that you see this evening. And really, it comes from the increase in taxes. I do want to give one final note before I forget our timeline. So, April 7th at 6:00 PM, we will have our Budget Forum here in D205, followed by our discussion meeting. April 21st, we will have the presentation of the proposed final budget adoption for approval. And then, May 21st, 2025, the 2025-2026 final budget adoption. You may remember from last year, if you were attending the meetings or watching at home, that our process and our timeline was interesting because we had got some news in January. This one will be our typical timeline moving forward. So, you'll see the base discussion in March, the proposed final budget in April, and then a vote on the final budget in May.
Yes, with one exception to the typical timeline because of...
It's a Wednesday.
Holidays and weirdness is that our May meeting will be on a Wednesday. So, we will look forward to seeing folks on a non-Mondays night. And that's to meet the 30-day requirement to keep that proposed final budget on public view prior to the Board being able to consider and vote on the final budget. Okay, we're now at comments and residents from, comments from residents and taxpayers concerning action items for this meeting. Nobody has previously requested to speak, but is there anyone who wishes to speak on the action items for tonight? These are the items related to policy, finance, human resources, facilities and curriculum and instruction that are on the agenda for action? Anyone wishing to speak? Or anyone online? Okay. We don't have any unfinished business for Board consideration or action. So, we'll move into the first set of motions. The first one is related to policy. Mr. Hoffman, can you really please read Resolution 6A?
Sure thing. I move that it be resolved that the Board adopts Policies 301, Creating a Position, 302, Employment of Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, 304, Employment of District Staff, 304.1, Anti-Nepotism, 305, Employment of Substitutes, 306, Employment of Summer School Staff, 307, Student Teachers, 815.1, Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence in Education and Retires Policies, LEA, Student Teaching, and GDFAB, Reporting Arrests and Convictions.
Second. Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
The next set of items on our agenda are related to finance, including the Treasurer's Report, monthly lists of bills, budgetary transfers, the list of unusable equipment, the AIU Program of Services Budget, the resolution for the reduction of professional staff, and a pilot agreement with Asbury Heights. Mrs. Gelman, can you please read the resolution?
Sure. I move that it be resolved that the Board approves the finance agenda items.
Second.
Okay. Before we open to general questions on the item, we do have one marked with an asterisk, which is a pilot agreement or a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Asbury Heights. And we are going to ask our Solicitor to review.
Sure, this is an agreement that our office reviewed and is recommending. It's an agreement between the district and a tax-exempt property. The tax-exempt property has agreed to payments in lieu of taxes that allows the exempt entity to contribute towards the services that they do receive. The payments will be split between the school district, the township, and the county over the period of the next five years.
And this is a renewal of this agreement? Yeah, so this is an existing agreement that is expiring. And we are grateful to Weiss, Parker, Kramer, and to Asbury Heights for working to renew this. Any questions or comments on this or any of the finance items? Okay. Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Ms. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
All right, next on the agenda, we have human resources items, including our personnel report and a settlement and release agreement for an employee. Mr. Wyland, can you read the resolution, please?
Sure. I move that it be resolved that the Board approves the Human Resources Agenda Items.
Second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
All right, the next section of the agenda is facilities. And we have one item there on security window fund bid. Mrs. Crable, would you please read the resolution?
I move that it be resolved that the Board approves the Facilities Agenda Items.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
And finally, we have...
Sorry, I was trying to look and see what my son was doing.
Now, we all know...
I saw him outside and I was like, what are you doing outside?
That's great. Finally, we do have a section on curriculum instruction, including an agreement with Sun Belt Staffing and Winter Guard trips to Dayton, Ohio and Orlando, Florida. Ms. Guth, can you please read the resolution?
Absolutely. I move that it be resolved that the Board approves the Curriculum and Instruction Agenda Items.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this section? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Next, we have questions or comments from residents. Presentations or comments are to be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to offer comment? Please state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Bruce Slater from 140 Skylark Circle. I went back to some of the old school board minutes. And I saw when in October, I believe, October 21st, it was voted that the Yearbook Committee would go to Columbia University. But I couldn't, I could not find when it was, when the time of the trip. I like to know when that trip is supposed to be, the spring, and why is it still on, if it's still on? Because, like I said, it's one of the most dangerous places in the country right now. You don't send kids in combat like that. I like to hear a response, when that trip is on or if it's already happened. And I will not accept anything but an answer on this one. One thing, I brought three copies of the United States Constitution. I believe the Constitution is freedom of speech and... I believe the Constitution is freedom of speech and also discussion of subjects that I bring up. And I like to hear a response from the administration, or school board, or whoever has an idea that's different than mine even. I like to, I have three copies of it here. I'll hand it out to anybody that wants one. I have some more at home. One thing I noticed on their, on the pie chart, about 77% of the revenue for the school was local. And almost nothing from the federal was 004, three zeros. You know, I brought up another idea was, that's exactly what we breathe, about 78% of nitrogen and oxygen and a bigger, bigger part of the next piece of the pie chart, and there's a couple of other small elements, but carbon dioxide is .004. It's nothing. And everybody's so worried about carbon dioxide in this country, it's a nothing. And it could be increased by 100 times and still be nothing, and still be less than 1%. But anyway, I like to hear a response, when that trip is supposed to be in New York City, and how the school is going to assure the safety of those students being there. I'll wait for the answer.
I don't have an answer right now, but we can certainly follow up with you on that.
Well, every time I hear that, it never happens, anyway.
Mr. Slater, if you'd like a response, there's cards in the back of the room where you can list your name and your contact information, and we would be happy to get back in touch with you. That's how we handle the responses. They're back on the table as you come in. So please write your name down and your contact information, and I will personally contact you.
All right. Fair. Yeah, I don't recall, but it's like April or something like that, you know? But that's a real bad time at Columbia.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Hi, welcome. Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Paula Bonjourno, Pine Tree Road. I would, I would hope that you could help me, and I think maybe help the public. I thought that the presentation and the information that the board gave this evening concerning the base budget and what was going on was extremely helpful. It's very confusing now. We're going through the federal changes with the Department of Education, which puts great uncertainty on the state funding. And then we have this property tax issue that is, I mean, I don't know if I can even get my hands around this whole, this lawsuit that has caused all of this havoc. Am I correct in understanding that this just is unconstitutional for Allegheny County and not the rest of the state? That's what I'm not sure of. And if it is unconstitutional for the whole state, and I know, Mr. Wyland, you've been very helpful in all of your information, why is this being, going so long? If we have an unconstitutional issue, why is the legislature, why isn't anybody doing anything? And I'm beginning to wonder why we aren't doing any, anything, anything about this. And if it is unconstitutional just for Allegheny County, I'm sorry to say, folks, that we've got, it's Allegheny County that's really going to have, we're going to have to all get up and really, really fight. And the other question, I'm sure that you've noticed that with the Shapiro, with his budget, where is that $526 million going? Is it coming just to Allegheny County to address this issue? It was in the, it was in the paper that he's going to give $526 million to address this inequity. Well, where's that money going? If this is, if this is just our issue, do you think you could help get some clarification on this? I mean, unless you, I mean, I think this is really important. And with what I'm hearing tonight, like I said, I think it's time for something for the community and act to get together, and we've got to do something about this. I mean, this is just ridiculous, this whole thing that's going on.
Thank you for your comment. And if you also wouldn't mind leaving contact information, so we can follow up with you on that.
Okay. And I don't know, even if you get this ready for the forum on the 7th, and I think this would really be great to bring more of this out, because I do not think, I'm talking to people, and people do not know about this unconstitutional issue and what's going on with this whole situation.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the room or online that would like to offer comment this evening? I would like to announce that the board did meet an executive session on March 11th for training purposes, for an annual legal training, as well as board communication training. And upcoming public meetings are April 7th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. As we noted, there'll be a Budget Forum in Room D-205 of the Mount Lebanon High School. At 7:30 PM, the board discussion meeting will be in Room D-205 of the Mount Lebanon High School. Just as a note for those that attend, there will be no Policy Committee meeting that evening, so that we can schedule the Budget Forum. And on April 21st, 2025, at 7:30 PM, the board regular meeting will be in D-205 of the Mount Lebanon High School. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Okay. Thank you all.